Madam Bodong Buul. Madam Malungilita Silsel Mergawe Vice President, Senator Mariur Flo Lider, Senator Aldabel, Magumiur Senator Serogui, Mrengasuliu Mosibuul Meimaga. Qodamoua asmeretial ngia momou ngedi al silsel, ela lonelol mel togobetsel londi bergid, el mora ordel. Kleru, mouna olkou.
Senator Regis Agitaya. Senator Rukabay Kigouo Inabo.
Oy.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Sal.
Oy.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oy.
Senator TJ Imrur Ramangsau.
Oy.
Senator Mark Uerbalau Rudim.
Oy.
Senator Umi Sangabau.
Oy.
Senator Kazuki El Taps Sungino. Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oy.
Senator Mason Ngireewangal Whipps.
Oy.
Flo Lider Cecilil Aldabel.
Oy.
Vice President Karai Mariur.
Oy.
President Haucons Paulas.
Oy.
Mister President, Tanganya Kurum.
Maria Kurum, Senator Agitaya, ma Senator Sungino excuse. Bodon tiraflo lider gid, Senator Aldabel, embolo ngotigay gidi raurele, Senator Aldabel.
President, madan mitmal ulilitasi si mergaw ma vice president, ma rebekel senatorse. Esola bodo omesetial atendar gid, de borsel item foreign de kanganara adaption rational, ma de borsel item five. Did not tagal gu communication emlara obisa directorial may. Ani isel Prescom 11-171. Al tianga nomination for appointment ramis Ofelia Ongalibang Johannes. El moodala Palau Environmental Quality Protection Board. Indirek tangania Prescom 11-172. Gukmasad al girela upcoming presidential state visits. Ra president, na buur se magada dida nou tringi for our information. Direk tangania Prescom 11-173. Tiang au invitation mora 2022 United Nations Ocean Conference in Lisbon, Portugal. Indirek for our information, ma direk bodo omesringi invitation. Direk tangania Prescom 11-174. Tiang masad al girela National Security Strategy, Ablour Belaw. Glaugutelil document, ma informationanga alse, ma direk bodom esringi. Tangania Prescom 11-175. Tiang au ke signing statement, al girel sel mlo sel Senate Bill 11-35, and niang mlo RPL 11-20. De kangania Prescom 11-176. Et tiang adek ke signing statement, sel gukne House Bill 11-38-3, HD1, ST1, niang blansania president, el mo RPL 11-21. Sel mo olubonganga niya Prescom 11-177. Et tiang au kmasad al girela Binance Digital Residency Presentation. Al plan del morning ra sometime this week, ma domeseringiye, direk bodo for our information. Agye gid, Mister President, tau communication emlara obisa directorial may. Edol mol ma atendar gid, ndiakangara six, de borsel seven. Ma di da nou tagal gu communication emlara House of Delegates may. Tangania HODECOM 11-92. Et tiang transmittal House Joint Resolution 11-33-7S for consideration ma action ra senate. Tirek tangania, tangania HODECOM 11-93. Tiang transmit ra House Bill number 11-64-7S, HD1. Indiregal for consideration, ma action ra senet. Tangania HOD Communication 11-94. Tiang adek transmit ra House Bill 11-33-3, HD1 for our consideration, indirek. Sel mo olubongala HOD Communication 11-95. Niang transmit ra House Bill number 11-43-46-4, HD1. Indirek for our consideration. Did not agye gid, au kduul morsel item eight. Reports of Standing Committee. Ma muu bulsebedel adapt ra Standing Committee Report 11-113. Tiang al girela Senate Resolution 11-76.
Si da mosion namdun esegn, embodon tirat Chairman Education, Senator Tabalwal, embolo buskidari port, Senator Tabalwal.
Sir President, akman msaule malungil trilajis, ma rebekla. Tiang Senate Standing Committee Report 11-113. Il gangestera Senate Resolution 11-76. Nansu, President, esetial khamitirga education, amlo dar setegidil el Senate Resolution esera ongimel buyra trume idegosengin. Idegel Senate Resolution 11-76. Ya muktegert tiang amaldi il muutrom melke la president ramis Emilia Katosa. Il muutel moodala boarda Palau National Scholarship, Frail Melawarra. Ma agye gid, agye trantingila report. Agoteku bulmulo mesagel Babrinela, Amiskatosa. Emblo gataklu senkanga tangania tablour vatsrostigririnira Political Science, ma Justice Administration. University of Hawaahilo. Ediregal orela ra Masters degree rinira International Relations ra Quads School Asia-Pacific Studies. Waase da University ra Tokyo Seaval. Indirek ngara 2007, el mora 2014. Amiskatosa amlania ileak, el droolera Ministry of State, emle Foreign Service Officer, tri. El la Bureau of International Trade and Technical Assistance. Segida amle ulirere sel time. Ediregal 2010, emle deputy permanent representative and counselor. A permanent mission of Palau, the United Nations, New York, segida. Indirek noutra orele. Ediregal 2011, engang mlo senior foreign officer ra et agyedil uruel mol muutre sel ulubongel. E segida 2013, ma 14. Amiskatosa amlo National Project Representative ra International Organization for Migration, IOM. Agye da agye mel uruel blel ngara alse, el momre. Ya uurugay agil uruel esera 2014. Engang amlo Center Applied School, ngara Social Studies. Nsoal duli tiagidil waasein. Temkasa al ala mora waiga gid, mal ngarabul droal. Emo imik, emoraqal chensei. El mora classroom, ma ba se eklungel. Kegegen ma naqlaudangia malungil mora ngaraskula, maqmalotgingal. Namani tiagidil togobetsel uruel mlo Center Applied School. Ngadirek malmoul, milodala abtogol ala bengga, milngil, tel mora odala olbi ra state rablun ngiwal. Ediregal odala tugal alaf, Repro Society, Palau Conservation Society, East-West Center Association, The Japan Alumni Association, Taiwan Alumni Association. Ediregal odala ngiwal youth advocate group. Ediregal o duw abtogor am kegral ala blun ngiwal. Agye da agye gukora ala ngaralse. Ediregal logi tiang ala benluu sel morning, nania bebe ra agil gorawabul droutru omaga iken muktegaringi, ma agyel osensibel, ma luguendia. Englo gataklu senkanga amalmoul, samreal, muutmokla agyel awarra, al blan tutkel girel. Ediaga gorasa reel, ma luguengrangkele, itatura blengel, mo dia gatmokla urel. Soal roguil tiang mraimelawara, atsumongal tanat. Agye direk lu geragil gorawab, blal blel albongel ra agyel osengel ra urel, ala baurra Scholarship Office. Engwaasein, lo gataklu, aseng la mesa abtogol application, aral ngage del mora Palau National Scholarship Board, emblo gwaasisegida aklungulela, abtaknar ngage del mon. Indirek logi ulel se, ngwaasein direk wal goramo omulutka. Adirek wal girel laudou del mor se, se wuktal, da dunding, nom gataklisegidil togoi. Agye roguil wal gorawlenira, agyel girel morning, lo gataklai gel wal lungil osengel, ma adroulela waase egal, blan ngiila warra. Emusaw ngi durawuror, embol tiral ala baurde, mu hutmakliya, il muutel meawarra, al mongil awurel. Muutel odala board. Kar direk mo se edel muqdo ngia hiring, lo bongel. Mu gataklu sa hiring, adimnaqabogor ombedengirinii. Masad al malungil, blal albongel, ma agyel osengel, mraimel te ala lutel moodala board. Soal nga tiang, nangasurira membersa khamitil, te da alima mortial hiring. Trigel tiroudar sa amil adril girel tiang nomination. Ya hiring, amaldin lotogok, la gel ngarababil waasein. Mraimel ngania du, ngaria klemriar ring. Engania telelebongen, dia logol muutus misi auror. Moosutirar ngage del tirau spagnese ra tugala scholarship. Obi segida, akmal dimengasurira rebekla, adana khamiti. Akla iniseum se edel gitmakli tiang report, er ngitanesra olala se edka resimitiambol se el maite tiang report. El ngani, sulap president.
Sulap Senator Tabalwal. Maria, Senator Sol Megakaminta, Senator Ishal.
Sulap, Mister President, malungil ma eruktoal negorgaw, ma rebekel membersetial Senate. Ya kadra khamiti, nding malisol moduli tiang, lagora timosenda message, el mora imnakngara hiring, lagora de sisa message, el mora Scholarship Board, ngaka support ra namani. President, reapointment. Akdi swadongwa attention, se edel malwa klabul sentenz, talaklabul sentenz, ngara page two. Et tiang report. Nsel longewal paragraph, gadebel paragraph, waase in response to how she hopes to guide PNSP to improve equipment of graduate to return home. Miss Katosa states that PNSP can explore strengthening its budget with human resources. Human resource agencies with international government. Akmoduli seeling, se agye dakomesringi, talaklol bitmeser gida tablour belaw. Qodasentral ngage an scholarship, el mora outside. If fail follow up, they are attracted till to come back. Mang yaqalwirin la ongaya, ngoetiu lolbiil, nguktilob sel talalal tiang lolbiil, ndolala. Tasemola, ndolala, waasein. Avnasa scholarship involve bongei. Every summer, al ngalga apply ngara school outside. Il may gor a shadow, ma tu intern ra various agency. Me laa, ak understand, asitgarete wal ngal, al summer. Tangania amdora PPUC, ma amdora various. Akubesengirel, il mostre trang segid. Emesa report ra scholarship waasein. Agyang ngara, abrelul girel. If follow up, tiga ngal, staff more year, junior year. Ma agyel intensive till merbelaw, malu tukar outside. And let's did, can but get them back home. Se gid, ya loth reel al. Le okmokamogel scholarship waasein, te laal ngalrebelaw, ablablikutetil. After abul princess school merbelaw. La beaga, ablablikutetil. Tiga ngal, ga ditovri, ditil, osigawur. Eh ya human, eh mungil, tangania besi ministry. Iwora malaktib, hopefully, insipiril, italaiset tiagidil besi ministry, under minister metou. Eh otutisel il muktegert tiang administration, megid, ngat tiang besi lolbiil. Lo waasein, gida girel. El dia adid konseren ra ablikutment, ra ala otubulun, meuror belaw. Ar ngage del ngara outside, meuror belaw, mal klabul. Sulap at chairman.
Dangod. Sumandia ngod, etirgero guil, gonget tiang Standing Committee report, al duoy. Om tok. Namai Flo Lider.
President, se gidadimle, imal ngara Standing Committee reporting. Ma de te kanganara sel item nine. Ma ku padiul morsel order of the day, te kanganara unfinished business. Sala, Mister President, tau era debora bi galender, eh did, biknotra ah sel sel HOD Communication 11-95. Did not tangania attachment, tel amlo misplaced ra ah mixupert tiang attachment, sel ngusel House Bill 11-64, sel ah ligara supplemental budget, tel ngulotungit tiang tiagidil communication ra al gukirel tel tarabil, sel 11-46, tel amle mixupersel. Niang dim, did not tringiye se gid, aba amo part tiang ligara first reading, di did not tringi for the error or stuff, emloun, dia kalsabiil. Notis se agye. Ma laise, de borsel first reading. Et muu, ma da pasra first reading, House Bill 11-31-3, HD1.
Si da mosion namdun esegn, ma kleru gami wetaytol.
House Bill number 11-31-3, HD1. A bill for an act. To amend Title 31 of the Palau National Code to update and modernize the terminology and mandates provided therein. To mandate the promulgation of state master plans and establishment of state planning commissions. To establish the Palau Regional Planning Commission. To amend Title 40 to require its state government to justify requests requests for capital improvement project funding based on the prioritized needs of the state master plan for orderly growth and development and for other related purposes. Te lulasimola, amlo dra Title 31, Ra Palau National Code. El mo update, te omakpeesa terminology, ma mandate, lulsisra la. Eh ma mandate oututela state master plans. Ma ohotpeela State Planning Commission, ma kethpeia Palau Regional Planning Commission. Malo dra Title 40, el maqnga ra, la rebekel state government to justify aontari laudou del mora capital improvement project, tel ol tirak la prior prioritize needs, la state master plan, el girela development, ma kupe bilangodel belgul. Te lulasimola, aluldersia delegat li ti otob, martru imatey, men delegats.
Si da sel resolution ra House. Tangania sol mega, ay mina Senate, a House Bill. Tangania sol mega kaminta. Sumandia, getirgero guil, gonget tiang lulasimola, rakotlomni bel duoy.
Oy.
Om tok. Te asain el mora Chairman Asi Aip, Senator Mariur. Bo momesel, tiang la la mengatmoklatar, maqlol, mel master plan, ma qabo momesringi. Flo Lider.
Mister President, qodam, ngara, di ngaa first reading, muu, ma da pasra first reading, House Bill 11-46-4, HD1.
Maria esegn. Si da mosion namdun esegn, ma kleru gami wetaytol, et al togora serse.
House Bill number 11-46-4, HD1. A bill for an act. To amend Title 9 of the Palau National Code to protect Palawan property owners from theft of their crops by creating an agricultural product registry and license and for other related purposes. Te lulasimola, amlo dra Title 9, Ra Palau National Code. El maruli, ma rebekal ala derbelaw. Lo utem, bulselbaakla ala dermalalma. Oh, selbaakla ala dermaror, ala dermalir. Lo yaga oktabel, agricultural product registry, ma licenses, ma kupe bilangodel belgul. Te lulasimola, aluldersia delegat li ti otob, ma nine, al delegates.
Maria, ora sol momega kaminta, girel Senator Ishal. Gorat togora serse, rakmungirel, goragirel, mo kurgikla, om kurgurngel.
Tangania agyel bebe ra bodul, wora wuknot a serse ringi. Eh dia dodiyen, waasein for medicine or for recreational. Ndiga ngaka ba istiriosli, akomesa waiga agidil bile, Mister President, tuasialskuma ata, ruuliya diogangara bebulser serse, ngamalaala. If ato ato, mgsangara klo, national government, tel mo finderni, girel sal mal loowital. Agye agye girel sepela state. Nguktingi il findarat, il apa imor efektiva. Asuba atara bankladis, haduriabu, rabliliou, uriabu, ngaramguy, eh oturur. Ela balse, mal momringi, bel dir tangal lakalut, bel eh se mungul momesa national government, embol oytawelis, raklo, global gul investigation, ma ngara keli. Edo dekada, adra megalis, emlamai, ruul dartilbuu, ingora ingora omotsera nguka, tele tay. Anyway, ndige agye, il bebe ra dolom, la agye, la kabul legal, ngaradarsib edum sa. Sulap.
Tirgero guil, gonget tiang lulasimola, rakotlomni bel duoy. Om tok. Namai Flo Lider.
Kamasaner ngi, President khamiti.
Asain el mora Chairman Ra Senator Umi Sangabau. Flo Lider.
Ah direk, di segid, mechonini alier, ngai segid, attachment sel 11-64-7S. Ngarsel tiang attachment, tiang, di depulaut tringi, ndiaga rangestera segid, el attachment, el mor tiang el bill. For information, ar rebekla. Eh de borsel next, el bill nga first reading, ma muu, ma da pasra first reading, House Bill 11-64-7S, HD1.
Si da mosion namdun esegn, ma kleru gami wetaytol.
House Bill number 11-64-7S, HD1. A bill for an act. To authorize and appropriate additional sums from the National Treasury for general operations and capital improvements of the Republic of Palau for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2022. To amend Title 27 to authorize a marine spatial planning process within Palau's waters and to permit certain marine research and local community based fishing activities within the Palau National Marine Sanctuary and for related purposes. Te lulasimola, am authorize appropriate tabe bilaudou, ra National Treasury. And niya mora general operations, ma capital improvements, Ra Blour Belaw. El mora fiscal year ending September 30, 2022. Malo dra Title 27, will authorize a marine spatial planning process, Ra Alse La Talbel Belaw, Emo Kongei. Other style marine research, ma community based fishing activities, Ra Alse La Palau National Marine Sanctuary, ma kupe bilangodel belgul. Te lulasimola, aluldersi, a President, Ablour Belaw, sulangal, Es Whipps, General.
Maria, sol mega kaminta. Agutira cert wishes? Cert wishes. Kesur gide, el mora order. Flo Lider.
President, mosion ngara ulal, ma pasra first reading, sel House Bill 11-64-7S, HD1.
Tiang namui wetaytol ringi, mang la girel, di bozis kasringi. Namui wetaytol, ndirga. Okay, Senator, oh Senator Ishal.
Namuiwe. President, tuasialtemega, la waaga de start, el sat tiang bill, eh mal diwan, el shogal un mora attention, tangania miti ra kassusi, mo dakmei. Bon. Mang shogal di moduli mora attention atcheredi, ma rebekel member, la khamiti ra wesemins. Et tiang, girel tiang House Bill 11-64-7S. Mang shogal rebekla, ada, un attention, ti mora page two. Et tiang bill. Oh, ogid, gengana budget?
But tell you, the House Bill 11-64-7.
But attention, rebekla, del mor sel page two, la line 19. Tiang, sir, Senator ngi, President, tel may. Sen momesel, sel line 19, eh after ADB, inkwase, and amount of 2.6 million shall come from the Blue Bay Prosperity. La House, amlet chen singi, mo 1.6 million. Eh se 1.6 million, amora agyel activity, executive branch, ma other than other staff. Eh sel overa page five, lo muu ra line 25, actually, ngomuu ra line 23. Eng momesado ngi, inkwase, tiang 100,000, lukna, si tiang bill. Sen momesel, sel line 28, inkwase, the entire amount of funds authorized and appropriate in this section shall come from Blue Bay Prosperity Funding Assistance. Silent, tra amount. Mang tiadomesringi, ah source of funding, ngania one million, emili ludou. Adapasringi SS. Mang apniusim, attention, rebekla, dring. Ngirel, se edel dulil, waasein, tiagidil uruel, mora hamit tausen. Se edel, il balansawan million, sen morge. Ya identifyingi ra, ala deralabil. Mang balans, se gid, a total amount, et tiang ludou, ngar tiang supplemental, a 2.6. Ya one 2.6, sel nyam durangrang. Ya 800,000, nyam durangrang. El amre la 200,000. I hope I'm making sense. Okay, si da, shogal beseringi. Sulap.
Cert wishes. Flo Lider.
Mister President, qodam, ngadiscussion, se gid, el House Bill 11-64 supplemental budget.
Maria, sol Senator Sangabau.
Salé, Mister President, ra tiang le ngartai del House Bill 11-64-7S. Ma korra moduli ten, Mister President, eh gorol nitra guidance tiang lulal. Le gomra inkwase tiang tiang bill, adek tangania urgency, ngi, la gada msa ra supplemental budget, ra blurbelaw. With that, Mister President, eh agundase, sel guk omso del tiagidil supplemental budget, tel mo involve ra guk togora marine spatial planning, msa ra Palau National Marine Sanctuary. Ah klotogoil, gundase, ing palasil, Ablour Belaw, il no gomata omsu, maureul girel. Eh given a urgency, tiagidil guk supplemental budget, eh Mister President, eh gomra inkwasing ngawa, et al given, mo olmosos ataim, mo se edil hutmakliya moye, gataklu eworil, gomra inkwasing, mo sebeel muhatmok, in time, el mo oongel, tiagidil guk togora supplemental budget. Akdi, o, ngi, tel inkwase, bulsebeela, sel main, la khamiti, mo reporting. Bolsi el gor, o, Mister segid, ya sebele la khamitirara wesemins, sel abom asanet, tiang mo main reporting. Bolsi edel, aurolo bongele, da ngapti segid, guk portionet tiagidil seksion, mal bolsi, emre, da guk togora supplemental budget, tel mo help, Ablour Belaw. Se gid, eh Mister President, ta, korra, di shogal moduli, leng mal important, el palasil Ablour Belaw, guk itmakli, magado ngi, tra ngil, mol, eh emi mo, klo mso, bulmo omesringi. Se gid, aonting, eh Mister President.
Sulap, Mr. Senator Sangabau, Maria ngod. Senator Ishal. Em onna, mayro.
Tangania, communication, gu bang, di tiang, dimnaal, official libelawal. Eh tiang, ukwase, major policy changes. Ngal, galamido, shringi, ra, we understand. El gorra identify a section by section, et tiang bill. Eh girel reference, el mora PNMS.
Ga gundaseng, wasi, eh, amo kisiela discussion, agidil, me, momesado, wasi, eh, ga, palasi proposal president, el mort tiel bile, ngil, maknit, major issue, liel, wa yelo, lo, taqul, senator Sabau, gada, na mo, tega temed, lo mes. Giril, el ngua legal, apinga, na adala, agidil, malu memo, le inkwasi, eh, ga, palasi na se tiel, proposal president, eh, ga, ra impact, ringi, el moresel three window, el diadog, garat tiel PNMS, according to segment, ra president, mal was gebao, mola trip. Eh, gi, deboto suw, ringi, eh, debi search, ringi, eh, sal momadangli, eh, ulto, da report, eh, olbeel bolgungi. Meng, le sugumendia, ndi ul deswe la adma, ulse la adma, deswek, ekdame la olal, eh, ndi okpung, nganiya basis, eh, ngaka omra, la wasi, eh, ga, proposal president, eh, ga, diagal bol kiskli, tiel PNMS for three years, eh, ga, ngattegi, major policy changes, eh, ngara, nilu, era tutar, after the session, eh, ga, section by section, a remajor issue, il gi sang, at sense, tiel, tiel administration ra PNMS, from PICRC, el mora Ministry of Fisheries Environment, and whatever, eh, tiya, gara bol, ngara, agidil, minister. Ya lak, aluide, if you be member, agidil, na ratend, olbeel alulau, tiya, ngilu, tiel PNMS administration, el mora, el mora PICRC, a dimnakal independent legislation, ndi mewa ide ra budget, gukting mewa decision, sel time, la se duul mo, ndi, in reality, eh, momesel ula PICRC, ndi kal, gara administration, a troi. And basically, eh, ngara research, study, meng, akvispect, ra guk nilu, tiel administration ra PNMS, ngul mora, ndi, ndimnakal, ndimnakal independent bill, mi re discuss, ringi, hearing, menga, erongiwe tiel blai, menga, edel omiwe ra house, eh, ngak, omesina, wasi, according to initial, tiya, gundaseng, amiru, ya dala, tiel major policy changes, ngora, da kisala, sing ra, ngarang motomalila PNMS, mesel palasi, agidil, ra, area present, ra blurbelau, eh, kabwes, under a PNMS, angese, tiyam alla, eh, tiram afalorni, em amrura study, eh, guk mo wasi, ngarang il pa sentra, el area, dongala area, mori, eh, makto, ni te seidil, teal, da dala, amspenda, el amaklu, eh, meski, ra legal memorandum, inkwasi, eh, ga, proposal, president, ngat tiel house bill 11-64-7S, agan ra impact, ringi, ra PNMS. Mahodip, tomli, guskli, sulan.
Geki da senator Inabom, ah, senator Sabau, blek assigner til giril tiyang, til terul chairman, meng, agun ni terngi, menga igal, kamenta, senator, sel mora consideration, eh, bol sebeel, ulu uro, ringi, em, se, diul kutmakli, sel guk muldeswe, em, gola, ra, ader ogu, bol sebeel, el mo kli, di ble, de diis kasringi, eh, ndi, gomda, ni, tiyawu del, len tgora budget, sel niya malmokte, ringi, meng, giril, ulu re, edel rulli, makto, ni terngi, bol sebeel, nganiya temiwe, ma uro lobengela, ader alla, em, katmakli.
Floor leader. Um, sulan, teale, president, eh, gukti, tiadirga first reading, ndi degoa, di, gausen nakmu, ti ga gidil, terul, eh, respective chair, bol, gora uro tiyang, clo, lotutlelen, engampasa tul, maklon legislation, akotin supplemental, eh, direkl, mo change, se sel guk, eh, letelela management, ma implementation, et tiel PNMS, meng, nganiya gil, gora implications, ringi, il giril, mal mo, lak, le, mongil mes, eh, especially, Mr. President, guk nga, omesel tiel, il source, tiel supplemental, eh, menga, tegi, del, del, duleseng, blue prosperity plan, eh, niya, already, nganiya organization, eh, na kamita, fan, el mo findra, eh, 2.6 million, eh, every year, for the next three years, el wabo, el help, eh, blurbelau, eh, wuk tora budget, ringi, as a result, eh, ga, guk, loss revenue from fishing. Ndigi da gora, nganiya, sel, gora, at letelela, do, ngatmo, klayosang, eh, giril, make sure , et tiel, funding, eh, amnamo available, mal, iben, nganiya, gora, document, eh, indicate, kmaset, tiel, el fund, eh, will be available within this fiscal year. Eh, information, eh, bla dangara Ministry of Finance, akmasen, dirga, al receiver of funding, eh, direkl, dirga, eh, sel wal grant document, eh, bla receiver, ringi, eh, gundaseng, clo tutela, kamitib, eh, make sure, eh, tiel, ludod, eh, will be available, mal, iben, sen, mamre, available in time for the spending, et tiel, liangal sum, mal appropriate, eh, galud, 2.6, lo, lo, ya supplemental budget. Eh, gi, da direkl, nganiya, sel, akmesel F A A, eh, minister, blel, sapmit, ringi, ndi, sel wal summary, sel F A A, ndi, oo tik, kmaseng, nganiya, grant, eh, tegi, lungel, audod, eh, 2.6, el under, eh, grant, ndi, sel, ba, momes, eh, ga, detail, eh, revenue, eh, ngala, gal, sir, se gidil, eh, inga, ma, gundaseng, clo tutlela, bo, eh, make sure, eh, tiel, ludod, amra, mo available, el sum, mo available, eh, ngara, eh, wal condition, et tiel, ludod, le, sum, eh, condition, eh, niya, mo required, kmaseng, giril, nganiya, change, ra la, eh, se, direkl, giril, el mo, eh, omeslingi, kmaseng, ngare, gil, mo implications, ringi, alsum, mal, ah, adgora, tral, prevent, eh, gi, gi, de, Mr. President, eh, wadgora, eh, eh, ma blurbelau, ah, mo olbanga, la, eh, ga, gidil situation, in which, eh, nganiya organization, mal, obangad, sebeel, dimel, gungaudod, lo, wal pledge, ringi, mal, obang, gamit, ringi, eh, help ra blurbelau, eh, nganiya, gil, gora conditions, ringi, ma, nganaklel, diakal, aware, olbeel alulau, gundaseng, ma clo tutlela, eh, sa, policy makers, eh, gundaseng, clo tutlela, mo transparenta, eh, ga gidil process, menga, mo, clear, kmaseng, ngara, amalmokte, ra, eh, galudod, eh, ngara, eh, gil, wal, gora conditions, mal, iben, attachment, lo, lobengela, requirement, ringi. Eh, gi, da, ah, la diso, kal menchoni, eh, gi, da, direkl, na pasa, sel, eh, fiscal responsibility and accountability act, eh, direkl, mal, matakl, eh, gil, principles, eh, giril, wal, guyder gidra, ta letelela, oh, oh, tabadalela, audod, ma, eh, allocation, audod, lo giwa, eh, gil, source, eh, eh, me, meng, giril, malmo, blakatakl, eh, gi, gi, segid, tram reflection, eh, transparency, ma, integrity, eh, re, olbeel alulau, mo, ngatmo, klayo, eh, gil, tora supplemental budget, ma, unified budget, eh, provide yo sang, el mora, person government. Diso, kal menchoni, segid, eh, Mr. President, eh, eh, gil, nama, menchoni, olal, eh, senator Sabau, eh, nama, kirekl, omeslingi, mal, clo, el policy change, eh, nganiya, gil, eh, bebe ra, gora, unanswered questions, eh, especially, eh, ngal, sel tiel, person house, eh, re-allocate, eh, gil, ludod, eh, P P F, eh, eh, legislative funding, eh, da, treat, et tiel, wal, bol, replace, eh, gil, loss, eh, ah, fishing rights revenue. Eh, gi, dam, ndingek, base, sel, eh, P P F, eh, sel, eh, guk tongosi il from $50, $100, eh, ngulobengela justification, kmaseng, ngabo, replace, eh, gi, gi, del loss revenues, eh, will, eh, teka effect, tiel, PNMS, ma bol, laka, omanget, as sel, segid, eh, 80% eh, kadamli anticipate, talos, eh, revenue, fishing revenue, therefore, eh, do longas, et tiel, P P F, eh, wabo, offset, eh, segid, eh, eh, loss of revenue. Eh, la, eh, gil, guk organization, eh, wal, maski, audod, eh, wabo, replace, eh, segid, eh, gil, mo understand, kmaseng, tiyang, momelmon, melway, segid, eh, iben, mo require, eh, gil, guk, eh, reopen, et tiel, eh, 80%, eh, mal, ubad, reduce, ringi, mo, o, telal par percent, most of eh, nganiya, fishing activity, eh, alsel belau, eh, and therefore, eh, eh, gil, guk, ma adjust, eh, sel P P F, eh, ngora, diakal, ngil, eh, eh, meri reputation, eh, gi, da, eh, though, I S R blue, kmaseng, da, 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 mo close, eh, a, the best, le, kada mo, eh, 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 gil, wal, bol loss revenue, abodo anticipate, lo giwa, tora tourism. Ndigi, dam, ndingek, base, eh, ga, tiel, ulm, kada, aroder, eh, la, tiel, tora pandemic, eh, la affect, eh, gil, eh, revenue, eh, P P F, eh, gil, environmental fee, ma, ulm, kada, ma, aroder, eh, tora fishing, ndi, guk, kel, lut, magero, klaw, eh, revenue, eh, tourism, eh, kada, guk, moma, kada, ma, eh, gil, eh, guk, sacrifice, eh, gil, eh, guk, wal, dulel, mo offset, eh, gil, eh, revenue, omanget. Eh, gi, da, gomba, gundaseng, ma clo tutlela, consideration, eh, gil, eh, taking to account, eh, as we review, eh, tegi, eh, dasel mola, Mr. President, sulan, teal.
Di gani Godo. Senator Mosau.
Sulan, Mr. President, eh, ba, goran, nama, klatkaga, ah, floor leader, moral, na nyata, eh, ledel, askra staff, eh, demle, puller, sel, quarrel, report, eh, blel, providing, eh, adra finance, gada, direkl, gora, mle, raro, goro, wasi, tiel, ludod, gada, malari, ringi, eh, gada, romtig, ringi, wasi, moral, diakal, blue prosperity fund, eh, la, count, ngara, finance. Eh, Mr. President, eh, direkl, romtig, eh, wasi, ndiakal, laka, audod, sel, counter cyclical fund, eh, gidil, mle, rainy day fund, sel rainy day fund, eh, gid, se, nganiya, audod, alsel, mal inafal, sebeel, eh, del, ma 2.6, eh, mal, sum, akli, eh, gi, eh, shortfall, eh, gal state. Eh, osisiltan, Mr. President, eh, nganiya, sel PNMS Trust, Palau National Marine Sanctuary Trust, eh, direkl, se edel, ma, audod, ringi, sob aklia, tiel supplemental budget. Ma, kirekl, mal mo, oh, obengela, eh, chairman, eh, Sabau, ma floor leader, martigal bebe ra ad, eh, mal, gongel, wasi, med, ngabati, tiel, tora PNMS, eh, di do, saad, et tiel, 2.6, eh, supplemental, el mora, eh, gal state, eh, tirah, mal, osbert, et tiel, ludod, eh, la altan. Eh, nganiya, audod, alsugumendirga, alme, eh, gal 2.6, eh, ludod, eh, blue prosperity fund, eh, mal, inafa, audod, eh, ngara, et tiel, la finance, sebeel, eh, del, gutmakli, tiyang. Se appoint, et shogal, momkat, taklil, ndiakal, laka, audod, ndiakal, ndiakal, laka, se, ndiakal, excuse, audod, eh, mal, ngari. Eh, Mr. President, eh, direkl, shogal, lid, el mora, trapoint, eh, wasi, ndiakadobe, segid, ah, ni, sel 15 million, eh, balance, eh, A D B, eh, direkl, bla, tatmo, klay ga gidil, buk, mener, eh, ledel, pass, eh, gal policy based loan, meng, lamos, eh, del, access, ringi, running, sel, eh, budget, eh, fiscal year budget, meng, ndiakal, laka, audod, eh, mal, dimkat, taklil, wasi, ndiakal, laka, audod, eh, nganiya, audod, eh, alsel, la ministry, eh, la altan, eh, se edel, lot, tabada, 2.6, eh, gutmakli, tiyang. Malaga, tongos, usum, ringi, eh, et tiel, gil, tora PNMS, eh, da, ni, ta, tiga, PNMS. Eh, Mr. President, ak, madengel, wasi, agri, wasi, tiel, 2.6, amle, mokte, ringi, eh, gil, eh, male, support, eh, 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 gil, mne, shortfall, eh, ndiakadobe, ta, tiga, PNMS, for the next three years, ndiakal, other way around. Gi, da, ba, mlangwa, 2.6, el may, eh, wasi, mergodori, eh, or, tiel, PNMS. Ma, mal, dikmu, eh, Mr. President, eh, de, maklat, krigid, rogul, wasi, nganiya, audod, ma, ba, eh, di giril, mamurur, ringi, eh, change, et tiel, source of funding, eh, mo, either, counter cyclical reserve fund, or PNMS, eh, da, katmakli, tiel, supplemental budget, eh, taabula, ar adra state. Sulan, Mr. President.
Maria Godo. Senator Nirebangla.
Sora, teale, Mr. President, eh, mal, gongel, ogun tira, kamenta, bebe ra senators, especially floor leader, wasi, laga, bodo, de, li, sel, source, ma condition, sing, buta, arbusul, olbeel, eh, olulau, giril, muddangali, say, an, nganiya, grant agreement. Ndii, Mr. President, eh, gora, gundas, for tiel, langwe, tsengart, tiel, house bill, et tiad, direkl, nodar, sel mora senate, eh, motra, understand, eh, wasi, tiyang, mo, ngaram, gutmakli, giril, eh, PNMS. Eh, after my analysis, ma, omiwe, eh, ra, eh, ga, gora, draft, eh, draft analysis, eh, adra alla, agid, ma, momesada, major policy changes, eh, the conclusion, eh, guk, nga, amnamor, ringi, maybe, eh, akluid. Eh, se, tiel, PNMS, eh, diagadu, ni tik, tiga, ringi, eh, di change, eh, administrator, eh, PNMS, meaning, eh, gel, wal, bol oversee, mal, ubing, manage, eh, PNMS, moves from PICRC, to the Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment. La, diakamod, eh, gora, program, alsela government, eh, I stand to be corrected, eh, which is an executive branch function, eh, diakangara, ewenla ministry, eh, ngara, ewenla, tar, eh, semi-government entity, or someone like PICRC, which is designed to be a research institution, Palau International Coral Research, eh, Palau International Coral Rift Center. Se, ya mandait, ringi, ma, omran, wasi, rogul, resource, mal, obang function, eh, government should be handled by the executive branch, under each respective ministry. Agut, tongora, tora education, ndiakal, iliyak, la, ader, masad, eh, alsugum, library program, eh, agiril, fall, under, eh, Ministry of Education, gung, eh, more say, mal, ubing, Ministry of Health and Human Services, eh, alsugum, program, eh, public health, somehow, eh, Ministry of Health and Human Services, eh, mur, eh, public health, Ministry of Justice, the same thing, eh, te, tora, da, te, tora, resources, eh, gi, eh, tumi, eh, giril, ngara, ewenl, sen, ministry, gung, eh, ministry, eh, then, decides, eh, what research, we need to do, what recommendation, sel mora, olbeel, eh, olulau, wasi, sum, aklo, eh, agiril, change, Allah, eh, te, diakal, losad, eh, mlod, eh, PNMS, tiyangara, alsel, tiel, supplemental budget. Ndii, masad, eh, wasi, eh, ministry, eh, mo handle, eh, PNMS, eh, after three years, after three years, eh, mega recommendation, eh, olbeel, eh, olulau, eh, at that time, eh, gi, da, most, eh, town, eh, decide, wasi, eh, eh, gal recommendation, eh, bla, lotod, eh, minister, Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment, eh, gang, swad, mlod, mal, ubendia, we can decide at that time. Segid, eh, guk, ra, di, omiwe, eh, Mr. President, ta, tak, aluid, ndii, that's kind of the way I see it. Romal, mosaur, eh, teale, Mr. President.
Sulan, Senator Nirebangla, Senator Sabau.
Senator, sora, teale, muktamlanga olal, eh, gundaseng, segid, eh, ulmakno, talibel, mo, malagoy, eh, gundaseng, eh, nganiya, sel, tora, brother, inkwasi, the devil is in the details, eh, and I think that's, eh, otel, important. Tiel, lo, mengel, eh, before, eh, Palau National Marine Sanctuary, eh, se, eh, kuaseng research, eh, every time, eh, len, dangi, let collect, eh, data. Masugum, eh, rural research, eh, kwasig, open up, eh, tiyang, let tiyang, eh, bill in itself, eh, kwasig, eh, momsa, kisiela, minister, eh, sebeel, eh, ra adel, mora, ngara, eh, sel, lokal, wasit. Ndidi, akasprida, minister, ma, eh, eh, supplemental information, eh, kwasig, mal, telal, eh, la, mosoi, sebeel, tiel, lokal, basin, eh, ga, collect, eh, telal, data, eh, mobe, kwasit, tiyam, lamungi. Meng, gundaseng, segid, eh, mal important, eh, meng, agulangi, tek, kwaseng, eh, eh, alsugum, segid, eh, information, eh, diakal, sebeel, mer, madad, eh, ra, dimri, eh, del time, eh, gi, or, eh, et tiel, eh, budget, eh, then, eh, maybe, giril, eh, mo, ekli, mo, tar, discussion, lobengela, minister, eh, eh, gumra, eh, gida, ngat, ndiakal, ngat, tiyang, eh, lomtok, eh, improvement, eh, ni, dilu, uro, eh, el mo help, eh, blurbelau. Se, Mr. President, eh, giril, eh, mo, eh, katakli, nga, ga, mal, eh, lorol, lobengela, minister, eh, mar staff, ringi, giril, eh, gil, eh, information, ndi, gumra, akmaseng, eh, gil, guk, tora, initial discussion, eh, gundaseng, ndiakal, bol, ndiakal, bol, sebeel, to, eh, gil, eh, details, in time, eh, mo, eh, mora, eh, tegi, supplemental budget, eh, ma, gumra, akmaseng, eh, osisiltan, eh, eh, gil, nganiya, limited, eh, research, sebeel, eh, minister, eh, la, altan, eh, gutmoklo, eh, within, eh, capacity, eh, gira, alsel, tiel, current, eh, legislation. Ndise, gidil, guk, exemption, eh, The exemption is not as good. The research is extended. I give the. The risk is not as good. The integrity of Palau National Marine Sanctuary. The information is not as good. The members of the ministry. The information is not as good. I want to say the supplemental budget is not as good. Mr. President.
Senator Isal.
Mr. President, I want to say. The president is the largest president. The president is the largest president. The major reference is the partner. The partner is 3.1 million. The ministry is 100,000. The money is not as good. The president is dealing with people. The money is not as good. 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 So they are all the same people. They are not as good. I want to say. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. Decrease, increase 80%. The money is not as good. The funding is not as good. The discussion is not as good. The memo is not as good. The identity is not as good. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. Now, the PNMS is not as good. The money is not as good. Five months is not as good. 2.6 million. The activity of the budget is not as good. The premel is not as good. The money is not as good. They say close to 10 million. We are not even discussing that issue. Five months is not as good. The president said we can handle that. The expenditure at the end of September 2022. I think we ought to be mindful. The lady in the ball. Five months is not as good. The rest of the operation.
Mr. President. Senator Mariur.
Mr. President, I want to say. The senator is not as good. The money is not as good. The committee has been assigned to all committees. The first reading. The money is not as good. The committee has been asked. The committee has been asked. The first reading is not as good. The committee has been asked. The committee has been asked. The state has been asked. Mr. President.
Motion for a debate. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. The committee has been asked. The senator Inabo. Senator Sengabao. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. Marine Sanctuary is not as good. The money 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 is not as good. The senator Isal is the Marine Sanctuary. The right there. The right there is not as good. The chairman Inabo has clarified. The money is not as good. The chairman has said. The ministry of Finance, Fisheries and Environment. The information is not as good. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. The 2.6%. The House is not as good. The Senate is not as good. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. Floor Leader.
Mr. President. The first reading is not as good. The second reading is not as good. The motion is passed rather than final reading. Senate Bill 1144, ST4, HD1.
Motion for a second. Mr. President.
Senate Bill Number 1144, ST4, HD1. A bill for an act. To amend Title IV of the Palau National Code. To mandate that preference be given to justices who are citizens of the republic to preside and issue judgments on matters involving customary ownership of land and chiefly titles. The motion is not as good. The title IV of Palau National Code. The mandate is not as good. The justices are not as good. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. The president, Hoconz Paulas.
The motion is not as good. The chairman is not as good. The chairman is not as good. Senator Isal.
Mr. President. The last session is not as good. The mega motion is adapted to the Senate. The will of the floor leader is not as good. The money is not as good. Identify changes in the House. Make sure the impact is not as good. The motion is not as good. Senator Paulas. The memorandum is not as good. The date is 2022. The title is not as good. The HD1. The title is reflected. The changes in HD1 of the House. The HD1 of the House is not as good. The title is not as good. The preference is not given to. The line is not as good. The title is not as good. The necessary findings of the House makes stylistic changes in the necessary findings of the bill. Changes are largely aesthetic and do not appear to change the meaning of the necessary findings or convey a message. That significantly differs from the text found in HD4. The necessary findings are not as good. The changes to Section 2 are not as good. Change 3 is not as good. Changes to Section 4 are not as good. This limits. The changes in Section 4. This will limit the pool of potential temporary justices currently serving in the Palau judiciary. Available for appellate panels on the issue of customary law. The customary law is not as good. The president is not as good. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. The family is not as good. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. Ten years ago, I contracted. I gave the clip to my end of the contract. The lawyer did not ask for it. The contract is not as good. The title is not as good. The money is not as good. The history is not as good. The chairman is not as good. The money is not as good. The constitution of the Senate, President Mariur, the national court. The man is not as good. The time spent on time. The money is not as good.
Mr. President. Senator Lo Dim.
Mr. President. The professional professional. The chairman is declaring. The preference is not as good. The money is not as good. The conflict is not as good. The justice system is not as good. Ownership is not as good. The question is not as good. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. The chief justice is not as good. The temporary justices are not as good. Mr. President.
The opposite. The chief justice is not as good. The money is not as good. The title is not as good. And he can go find. An unpalable justice. The order is not as good. The justice is not as good. Chicago, Atlanta, Guam, Hawaii, Saipan. The devil is not as good. The conflict is not as good. The money is not as good. The money is not as good. If you and I agree. The money will agree to use her or him. The agreement stands. And then I guess they can use him or her. The money is not as good.
Mr. President. More.
The circumstances are not as good.
The circumstances are not as good. The order is not as good. Floor Leader.
The Senate Bill 1144, ST4, HD1. The final reading. The discussion is not as good. The motion is positive. The consensus is not as good. The rejection of the HD1. The conference committee is not as good. The changes of the House. The correctors are not as good. The president is not as good.
The motion is not as good. Mr. President.
Senator Rukbay Kikuo Inabo.
The money is not as good.
Senator Jonathan Shoyzal.
Yes.
Senator Stevenson J. Quartey.
No.
Senator TJ Imru Ramangasaw.
No.
Senator Mark Uelwalaw Rudim.
No.
Senator Humi Sengabao.
No.
Senator Andrew Tabelwal.
No.
Senator Mason Nirevangal Wips. Floor Leader Cecilil Eldevel.
No.
Vice President Kray Mariur.
No.
President Hoconz Paulas. Senator Mason Nirevangal Wips.
No.
President Hoconz Paulas.
No.
Mr. President, I want to say. One yes, one no.
The Senate is not as good. The. The no?
Ten.
Ten no, one yes. The chairman is not as good. The member of the committee is not as good. The chairman is not as good.
Mr. President, I want to say. With due respect. I spend time with Senator Gomsoong. The water is not as good.
The chairman is not as good.
The floor leader.
The floor leader is not as good. The chairman is not as good. The floor leader is not as good. The next session is not as good. Okay, floor leader.
Mr. President, I want to say. The calendar is not as good. The resolution calendar. The referral is not as good. The resolution 1177 confirming presidential appointment of Ms. Ophelia Ongalibang Yohanes. The MODA LA ICPB. The House Joint Resolution 1133-7S. The heartfelt sympathy and condolences of the mother family. The late Masao Salvador. He is the former ambassador. Extraordinary and plenty potentially to the Republic of Japan. Of Republic of Palau to Japan. The medical coordinator. Of Palau Medical Refer Program Hawaii.
Okay, the confirmation of Ophelia Ongalibang and the senator Sengabao. The resolution is not as good.
Mr. President, the move of the House Joint Resolution 1133-7S is not as good.
The motion is not as good. The money is not as good. Floor Leader.
The president is not as good. The adoption calendar is not as good. The Senate Resolution 1176. The confirm presidential reappointment of Ms. Emilia Katosa on the MODA La Palau Scholarship Board. of the Palau Scholarship Board.
The motion, Mr. President, is rejected. Senator Inabo.
The president, the court will approve the motion to make a motion to approve the appointment. The appointment through Ms. Katosa of the Palau National Scholarship by acclamation. The court will approve the court's decision. The court will appreciate the court's decision. Do you agree, Mr. President?
The motion, Mr. President, is rejected. The court will approve. The court will approve. Floridir.
The president, the court will approve the House Joint Resolution 1133-7S.
The court will approve.
The president's appointment, the court will approve.
The court will approve.
House Joint Resolution number 1133-7S. A House Joint Resolution to convey heartfelt sympathies and condolences to the family, relatives, and people of the Republic of Palau for the untimely passing of the late Mr. Masao Salvador, a Palawan, former ambassador, extraordinary and plenty potentially of the Republic of Palau to Japan, former medical coordinator to the Palau Medical Refer Program to Hawaii, USA, and a successful local businessman, and also recognized his valuable contributions, commitment, and services to the Republic of Palau, especially in the development of the Republic's foreign career services in the private sector. An example for all generations to emulate as a model for hard work, perseverance, and great professional and personal achievements. The H J R number 1133-7S. A old, a clean, a real, a moral, a long, a a a and Mr. Masao Salvador. Another fellow, former ambassador, extraordinary and plenty potentially, a the medical referral coordinator of Palau Medical Refer Program, a Hawaii, USA, a very successful businessman, very recognized, a a career services in the private sector, my professional and personal achievements. The H J R number 1133-7S. The delegate, Timoti R. Sinza. My
The resolution, the ambassador, Masao Salvador, rejected the court's decision. The court will approve. The court will approve. Floridir.
Mr. President, the resolution calendar. The thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, several Missalinas Communication. The note, Missalinas Communication 11444. The FBI solicited a F I A C application. The Missalinas Communication 11445. The Palau Community College gave a 2021 annual report to the P C C. The Missalinas Communication 11446. The Mr. Bells, a R O P president, Wips. The Senate gave a final statement of civil action number nineteen one forty-eight. The Missalinas Communication 11447. The Mr. Kumanga, the Senate President Paulis. The P N C C Board of Directors Resolution. The Missalinas Communication 11448. The Mr. Minseok. The Senate President Paulis gave an invitation to Asia-Pacific Parliamentary Forum on Global Health, six meeting of strengthening health, security, and building resilience for the future in Seoul, Republic of Korea, twenty-four to twenty-fifth, August, twenty twenty-two. The Missalinas Communication 11449. The Ms. Tomas, the Senator Tabelwal. The gave a letter for donations. The Missalinas Communication 11450. The F I B. The solicited a the F I A C application. The Missalinas Communication 11451. The Mr. Victor. The Senate President Paulis gave an invitation to World Ocean Day. My God. The Minister Victor. The Missalinas Communication 11452. The state leadership, the speaker Anastasio, the delegate, the the dismantling of P N M S. The Missalinas Communication 11453. The F I B solicited a F I A C application. The Missalinas Communication 11454. The Mr. Kyoto, P P U C, the Senate President Paulis. The Senate representative will join team Palau to the mini-games. The Missalinas Communication 11455. The Ms. Anson. The president, the Senate president. The meeting with Internal Revenue Service, I R S. The Missalinas Communications will be approved by the business. The senators.
The business, the the Senatorial.
Mr. President, the constituents have approved the the administration and the The administration has helped start a small business. The financial report and the under mega bank. Five million. The nine hundred, nine thousand, four thousand. A million, four million. Five million loan proceed. The the balance of five million. The part of the loan. Yet, the alone for women. The the hopefully, the loan is the and the promotion. The president is secure.
Senator Sangabao.
Mr. President, the attention, the presidential communication 11174. The president, the national security strategy. The foreign affairs will coordinate the questions, Mr. President. The reports include the climate change. The economic security. The report the livelihood existence Pacific level rise. The process of national security. The Ms. Jennifer Anson. The Mr. President.
Do you agree, Senator Sangabao? The chairman of foreign affairs, Lawrence. The Senator Inabo.
The president, the bring attention the board of the the permanent Do you agree, Mr. President?
Do you agree, Senator Inabo? The vice chairman, Senator Agitaya. The Senator Inabo is a vice chairman. Unfortunately, the senator Agitaya will find out the manager. The necessary is the announcement. The is Floridir.
Mr. President, the announcement and the
The motion, Mr. President, is rejected. The court will approve.